You're right, for me. But everybody please, uh, stand as they called the council meeting to order for, uh, June 22nd. We're gonna see the pleasure of allegiance, place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with thy reputation, justice for all. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. I'm Miss President for the City Council Successor Agents, Successor Agency and Housing Authority.
Okay, um, if you wanna make, uh, public comments, you can call 888-251-2949 or 215-861-0694. And the access code for today is 450-0707, pound, and then wait two seconds and press pound again. Operator, are there any callers?
If you wish to make a public comment at this time, please press pound two on your telephone keypad. That's pound two on your telephone keypad to make a public comment. We do have a caller. First caller, your line is now unmuted, please go ahead.
Gil, let's go, buddy.
Am I on?
Yes, you are, yes, you're on, you're on.
Oh, good afternoon, I'm Budson, City Council, Gil Matthew, District Four. And, uh, as usual, we're gonna talk about the, uh, warrant register. And still again, you got a lot of problems on the warrant register out of them there. And I would hope by this time you would have assigned someone, uh, to take care of the problem, which has been ongoing for a long, long, long time.
How many years?
Oh, maybe ten.
Okay, alright.
I mean, even before you arrived, you know, so this is an ongoing thing. And they need a little more professional advice with that, uh, warrant register. I mean, it's hitting rock bottom. There's on there, someone put on payments for invoices. No, I mean, you got to have a little grad school person to put that on. You know, to, uh, check for $2,000 and to usually describe what it's, uh, and this will say to pay invoice. Now, come on, that, that, that's something radically wrong. But anyway, we move on. Also now, on the agreement with the Urban Traffic Consultant, you know, with Lauer, we almost a million dollars, you know, but we, uh, that's for the transportation.
Say that about the million dollars, Gil? What was that about the million?
No, no, not the million dollars, I just wanna be a whole report. To protect Mr. Adwell, give a report on the background of it. And what it is, it's about the, uh, intelligence movement, and, uh, it's a grant fund, not a grant.
Are you talking about the ITS? Intelligent Traffic System? What do you wanna know about it?
What I wanted, for Mr., uh, Adwell.
Actually, I can tell you all about it.
Well, he's the man in charge of it. I know you can tell.
I know, but I can tell you all about it.
Well, tell me what it's about.
Okay, it's Intelligent Traffic System. It coordinates our traffic signals.
Do it on your own time, no, don't take my three minutes.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, you know, I'm only limited to you have the bulletproof pitch, you can talk as long as you want.
Alright.
And I only have three minutes, so, but I respect that. Anyway, it's, it's, it's with the, uh, Lauer and the, uh, negotiation, you know, with the specific plan. I've studied the plan.
Okay, Gil, I'm sorry, but you're out of time. Operator, next caller.
Yeah, well, he took my time, my buddy.
Operator, next caller.
Next caller, please go ahead, your line is now unmuted.
Uh, hello, council members, I belong to District Four. Uh, this is not a rhetorical question, it's regarding our citywide permit parking. Um, how did the city council and the city public works, um, determine that an R1 through an R4 neighborhood is allowed it to permissible parkings for free? And how do they justify between an R1, R2, R3, and R4? Furthermore, uh, in the city letter that was sent out, I believe, maybe like January, um, nor on any kind of city documents or the website, does it state that any additional, um, residential permits will be a hundred dollars? So it's a hundred dollars for every, you get two free ones, but every other ones is a hundred dollars a year. This, the reason why I bring this up is when on the schools, uh, sorry, on the Inglewood website, uh, version two of the document shows all the information as a chart for parking fees, but not for residents. And I think residents are gonna be kind of shocked when they see that there is a hundred dollar fee for every other vehicle. Now, in the letter, uh, it was double sided, English on one side, Spanish on the other. The Spanish side clearly stated, uh, other cities like San Monica, Hollywood, Beverly Hills, Manhattan Beach, that have similar permit programs, but on the English side, that information did not appear. On either side, there's no information indicating what the additional cost will be for other vehicles of that, um, that household or R2, R3, R4. Um, so, my question to everyone is, you know, in your council meeting on the 25th, I believe the mid-year budget, there was a 13.5 increase in unemployment. How is it feasible for us as residents who are undergoing unemployment during this pandemic sort of recession to actually determine, should I pay my parking permit or pay my gas, my water, and my other bills? So, um, it's not a rhetorical question, I just wanna really know how our city council, how the Public Works Department, how parking enforcement came to the conclusion of a hundred dollars being an ethical response to charge our residents? And I yield my time, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Once again, if you have a public comment to make, please press pound two on your telephone keypad. Next caller, your line is now unmuted.
Is this my line?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Um, there's questions about the warrants registered as a duplicate, it looks like duplicate billings, and if you can please explain the jump of to $20,000 a month for the incarcerated healthcare, and then they also have a $1,000 monthly, um, fee. Also, there's continued and ongoing Brown Act violations regarding the ample time and, um, not having ample time, and in the minutes, um, there's mislabeling of the, um, videos as well for the dates. Um, there also was a response regarding the 12:15 closed session.
Ms. Craft, Ms. Craft, which item were you, which item were you commenting on?
You're using, if you, you need to start my time over, because you interrupted me.
No, I'm not gonna start your time over, I'm asking you which item.
I said the minutes, I've been, and first of all, you're violating Brown Act again, because I have not identified myself, so please stop calling out any name to be addressed, to be attached to my voice. This is a problem with you, you do this, you think it's funny. So, um, you've already been notified that doing that puts people in physical safety danger, and you continue to do it, and you think it's funny. It's not. So now, regarding the minutes, the 12:15 minutes, what you interrupted me while I was saying that, the closed session, there was a response. You laughed and said, "This is a constituent that you're not dealing with." And Padilla laughed in response and said, "Because he knows better." And then you had the whole chamber uproar, clearly laughing. That was inappropriate, it was also, I believe, a Brown Act violation, it was also a violation of the caller's rights. Employee complaints have not been responded to, you're playing games because you, I specifically have been blocked from filing claims. Now, also, um, you have, uh, for SPH1, prior to July, um, 20th hearing, please try delivering the services and abiding by the California Health and Safety Code, responding to the phone call regarding the lack of delivery of the water and sewer and refuse. And, um, the city is violating those codes, is violating those codes. In addition, um, your warrant register, I mentioned that, I said there's duplicate billings, and explain the jump of $20,000 a month for incarcerated healthcare.
Operator, any other callers?
I'm not done.
Oh, you were quiet, I thought you were done.
Mayor, what should I do?
Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll wait for, uh, 23 seconds and...
Ma'am, please go ahead.
It's more than 23 seconds, because you violated the Brown Act again by interrupting me, as you did Gil Matthews, and putting in your input when you're not supposed to be. So you need to put on the extra time, you've done this repeatedly practically every single meeting that you've been at, to the citizens, by blocking them and silencing them and refusing to listen to what they have to say about things that are on the agenda and claiming they're not on the agenda, as you did on 12:15, and as you did on 12:18. Those things aren't reflected in the minutes. The minutes cannot be put in as they are, because there are certain things that are not reflected in the minutes, and they will be lies.
Thank you, Ms. Craft, operator, next caller.
If there are any public comments that you would wish to make, please press pound two on your telephone keypad. There are no further public comments at this time, Mr. Mayor.
With that, we'll close the public comment. Item one, CSA one and H1.
Warrant register.
Move allow payments.
Second, Madam City Clerk.
Council members, successor agency members, and housing authority members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Chairman Buzz.
Aye. Madam Clerk, what's the next scheduled matter?
Yes, Mayor, the next scheduled matter is a public hearing to consider the Inglewood Housing Authority's one-year, 2021 through 2022 agency plan.
Has a notice of hearing been given in a time form and manners required by law? And do you have the affidavit on file?
Yes, Mayor, notice has been given and an affidavit is on file.
Have any communications been received on the matter?
No communications have been received, sir.
Is there a staff report on the matter, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Roberto Chavez with a staff report.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board, members of the public. Roberto Chavez, HUD Programs Manager for the Section Eight and Housing Programs. Today, we're here to present to you the, um, agency plan for the Inglewood Housing Authority. I prepared a small, uh, brief presentation to help with the flow of the, um, items on, on the, um, calendar. Uh, the Inglewood Housing Authority Public Hearing to Consider the Housing Authority's 2021 Annual Plan as part of the 2020, 2025 Five-Year Plan. The purpose, it's required by HUD for continued Section Eight funding since 1998. Uh, it includes the five-year plan, which outlines the missions, long-range goals, and objectives. The annual plan addresses things such as the immediate needs, strategies, and operations. Contents of the agency plan, one of the main, um, contents is the mission, "To promote adequate and affordable housing, economic opportunity, and suitable living free from discrimination." Some of the highlights of the specific program goals include, but are not limited to, "Apply for additional special purpose vouchers," "Maintain the high performer status," "Implement streamlining measures granted by the Housing Opportunities through Modernization Act, or MADMA, HADMA, of 2016," "Utilize the authority to preserve affordable housing through project-based voucher program," "Expand housing opportunity through selecting families from the Section Eight waiting list that contains over 4,000 families," "Perform quality control inspections to verify that families are living in decent, safe, and sanitary housing," "Monitor the Housing Choice Voucher, Section Eight Program, payment standards to assure that low-income households are not overly rent-cost burdened." Agency Plan Preparation. In developing the plan, consulted with the consolidated plan for the CDBG program, the Section Eight Administrative Plan, waiting lists, and participant data. The next phase was to meet with the, the Resident Advisory Board, and we shared the, the proposed plan with them to get their feedback. And lastly, the agency plan was on public display for 45 days. With that, the recommendation is to conduct a public hearing to consider the annual agency plan for 2021, approve the annual agency plan, authorize the chairman to sign the resolution and execute the required certification forms for submission to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. With that, I'd be free to take any questions.
First, we'll, um, receive public comment. Operator, any callers on the line?
If you wish to make a public comment at this time regarding the topic, please press pound two on your telephone keypad, that's pound two on your telephone keypad. First caller, your line is now unmuted, please go ahead.
I believe that affordable housing is very important and it's urgent, particularly now. However, the City of Inglewood is in violation of Title II and Title VI, and violating also other civil rights and ADA, and so I don't believe that they are in the position to actually be able to certify this and other documents, among other things, or accept any funds. And it's a mistake as well where that they have been violating these civil rights as well. I specifically have been barred from Edward City Hall and treated with riot, and it has been both violation of my rights. And to take care of my business with the city, I've been able to view those documents prepared on 7/4. We were barging into no cloud's fault unless they had an appointment. So, since you can't get an appointment, no one returns your phone calls, no returns your emails, and they won't send meetings, you can't get an appointment. Um, in addition, the other place, you guys are saying that you have them available for the citizens, there's no access to them, we're not getting those newspapers, no, we're not getting those newspapers, the Herald, really. Um, also, people don't have internet, um, and people aren't internet savvy, some people. So, the internet information is truly not accessible. Now, the housing that is, this portable and transitional housing is across from the Fairview Heights station, stop must not be named Fairview Heights. It's a lost and established, um, name of one of the oldest areas in Inglewood. Instead uplift both the area and the building that's beautiful, affordable, and transitional housing amenity in the beautiful, established, historic area of Fairview Heights. Everything, things are being hijacked by the city council. The rights are all on these commissions, you're not listening to citizens, you're not actually doing anything about what we're saying. You've been ignoring us, and in particular, the mayor and Padilla have said that they're ignoring this constituent. This is what's going on, folks. You're not getting the truth, you're not getting the information you need in a timely, complete manner. That must stop. The housing, we need that portable housing. Give it to us in a wonderful way, do it in a way where we're actually informed and we can actually respond. Too many people don't know about what's going on.
Are you finished, caller?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Alright, talk to you next week. Uh, operator, are any other callers?
There are. Next caller, your line is now unmuted, please go ahead.
Uh, Gil Matthew, District Four. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear, Gil.
Very good. Okay, uh, on the housing, we have a housing crisis there. Well, you're aware of that, anyway. But now, we need 9,000, uh, units of housing, you know, which was replaced a long time ago. Are you familiar with SCAG? And you're also familiar with the, uh, I think it's called a Housing Network or something authority? That's affiliated with, uh, with SCAG. Now, uh, we, we up for 9,000 units, and we've been producing some. So I don't know how much more we need, but I'm sure you have to comply, because it's mandated by the state. And the question is, people do not know. We have no newspapers, we have no newsletters, people don't have, uh, internet, but you're totally unaware of it, and you have no common with any com- contact with their districts. So people do not know. And as far as the, uh, meetings with the district, with the members of the community, it does not happen. I don't know what planet you guys are, people are not informed. But you're gonna have these 9,000 houses, you're gonna pay a fine, and I think you have to submit the, uh, thing at the end of June. And all of South Bay is having the same problem. Who's representing you at SCAG? What you guys are doing, and you're set and set, like you don't know anything, you don't say nothing. And then, you are guilt to be quiet. Well, you know I'm not quiet. But the point I'm saying is, you have residents that's interested in this city. And for the life of me, they're quiet. And I can't, I say they don't care, and you have most intelligent residents, but they have no confidence in you guys, 'cause you don't reach out. Oh, I don't know what's going on, I'll tell you the truth. And we need elections, for you to speak up. But it's too much at stake, it's too much happening in the South Bay. All the South Bay areas, they're taking advantage of what's happening in the region. They're building, they're building hotels, they're building million-dollar golf places. I don't know if you're aware of that, but they've taken it, not taken advantage of it, but they're aware of what's going on.
Yeah, we're building billion-dollar arenas, Gil. We're building billion-dollar arenas, billion-dollar hotels. Multi-million-dollar youth orchestra centers.
You're taking my time, man, but I, I...
No, actually, your time was up 10 seconds ago. I'm just responding to you. Operator, next caller.
If you wish to make a public comment at this time, please press pound two. Mr. Mayor, there are no further comments at this time.
Okay. So now we've had public comment, uh, are there any council, I'd love a motion.
I move item two to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Housing Authority members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Buzz.
Aye. Now we'll move on to, uh, the minutes, two and three.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Sorry, Mayor, we're gonna take it back.
Oh, wait, because?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, so, so we'll just do two first.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, could you move that, Councilman?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Upstate.
And Mayor Buzz.
Aye.
Abstain.
And Mayor Butts.
Aye. Item three.
It's it. Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council member, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Approve.
And Mayor Butts.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, consent calendar, items four, five, six, and seven.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council member, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. SPH one.
Staff report recommending adoption of a resolution declaring the city's intention to adopt the report of the Public Works Director concerning delinquent charges for sewer and refuse collection services, and requesting that a public hearing be set for any protest.
Move item one.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. We'll set the public hearing for July 20th, 2021, at 2:00 p.m., and I move three and four.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. SPH two.
Staff report requesting that a public hearing be set to consider an ordinance to amend Inglewood Municipal Code, Chapter 10 and 12, including zoning code amendment, including zoning code amendment, ZCA-2021-002, to modify signage regulations for banners in the public right-of-way citywide.
Set the public hearing for July 20th, 2021, at 2:00 p.m. Oral reports, A1, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor.
CM1.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no oral reports from the City Manager's Office.
CC1.
Yes, Mayor, real quickly, I would like to let our residents know that the City Clerk's Office will be attending the summer bash this Saturday at the SoFi Stadium from 9:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m., and will be ready to register our residents 16 years and older. Also, if you need to make any changes to your registration, we will be there to assist you with that as well, and I look forward to servicing our residents and meeting them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. CSA two.
Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on December 8th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council successor Agency members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Abstain.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. CSA three.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on December 15th and January 12th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council successor Agency members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. Adjourned Successor Agency, H2.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on December 8th, 2020, and the special meeting held on December 8th, 2020.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Housing Authority members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Abstain.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. H3.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on December 15th, 2020, and January 12th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Housing Authority members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. Adjourned Housing Authority. There are no appointments to boards and commission. Public comments regarding other matters not covered on the agenda. One minute. Operator, any callers?
If you wish to make a public comment, please press pound two on your telephone keypad. That's pound two. First caller, your line is now unmuted. Please go ahead.
The same thing every week. You're right, same thing every week. Mislabeled videos at the council meetings. We're paying a lot for IT and audiovisual services. Yet calls are cut off, there's choppy audio, we can't be heard, we're interrupted when we're making our public comment. There's continued ongoing Brown Act violations. It's a toxic environment. We don't want it to appear as though it's a, this is a farce or just a formality. We want it to actually be effective. Still, there's no Police Oversight Commission meetings. Chief Frontirata seems to be in violation of a number of things. He refuses to provide info to be able to have a productive meeting. It's a catch-22 situation. Can't have the meeting without the information, can't have the information without the meeting. In ignoring critical and urgent personal and property health and safety issues, week after week, from the mayor, Alex Padilla, the chief Frontirata, your HR people, it just is ridiculous. Can we have some improvement, please?
Thank you, caller. Operator, are there any other callers?
Yes. Next caller, your line is now unmuted. Please go ahead.
Ah, Gil Matthew, District 4, Man City Council. Several things, Mayor Butts, please answer when you get ready to comment. What's happened to the Skill Cell? What's happened to the motorcycle, the $9,000 BMW motorcycle? And what's going on with this co-parking thing of Findlay? And you, congratulations on the youth relief. And also for the gentleman, about what you don't know, or what you know that you don't know, I would recommend that he look in the mirror and tell that to the person he see, because you don't know a damn thing, okay? And you look in the mirror, and then what you, what you don't know, or some little thing that you say, and you repeat it 10 times, because the person that you're looking at needs it. Anyway.
That was very helpful, Mr. Matthew. Operator, next caller.
Boy, it's helpful you too.
If you wish to make a public comment, please press pound two at this time. There are no further public comments.
Okay, with that, we'll go to Council comments. Councilman Dotson, District 1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope everyone had a great weekend, was able to enjoy our first Juneteenth federal holiday, and for the fathers out there, I hope you had a great Father's Day. For me, it was nice to be able to celebrate with the family and have them all around me. People have started celebrating the Fourth of July. We have a ordinance here where we don't shoot nothing but safe and sound fireworks. So, if you are shooting fireworks in the City of Inglewood and it's not safe and sound, you can report illegal fireworks to the police department by calling the non-emergency And for, from the center of the click of the link, sorry about that, the website, you can also, police turn in on the website at forum center and click on the link for reporting illegal fireworks. Starting June 26th, code enforcement will be out patrolling in the, in evening hours looking for violators. There's a $500 fine if you are caught with possession of illegal fireworks. So, don't get caught.
Don't you violate somebody.
No, you don't want them to use them at all.
This coming Saturday, SoFi Stadium is inviting the residents of Inglewood to the stadium for their summer bash, and you can sign up online to take tours and enjoy extra activities between 9:00 and 6:00. Inglewood High School Band Director, Mr. Hudson, is retiring, and he's been teaching at Inglewood High School for 44 years. Congratulations, Mr. Hudson. There will be a celebration for him this Saturday from 1:00 to 5:00 in front of the school at the transportation mural. So, if you can, please join us at 4:00. Some of his oldest students will form a drum, a drum line. I encourage all of Mr. Hudson's oldest students to come out and show your appreciation. I hope everybody will join us. Giving 44 years of your life to helping students is something very special. So, with that, you guys have a wonderful day, and thanks for coming out.
Thank you. Councilman Padilla, District 2.
Thank you, Mayor. Good job, George. Got a good information there.
Great information.
Yeah, especially when you talk about those fireworks.
Because you don't want to get caught.
Exactly. But, you know, people always want to blame Inglewood for the loud fireworks, right? I get calls from folks outside of Inglewood, "It's all coming from Inglewood." I said, "Boy, if you could pinpoint that, you're, we're gonna hire you," you know? But it's all over the place, these fireworks, the loud baboons and all that. They're all illegal. You know, you just got to make sure you report to folks if you, if it's one of your neighbors or whatever, you know, we got to do the right thing so we can stop the nonsense and let folks get some rest, let those folks with PTSD, you know, you know, get what they deserve is some peace and tranquility, for our pets as well, for the babies that are out there that can't, you know, sleep because these things, I mean, these knuckleheads are doing this stuff, I was gonna use another word, they're doing this BS, I mean, after midnight, I mean, 2:00 in the morning, you know, it's gotten ridiculous. So, please, let's, let's stop this nonsense. I do want to thank Mr. Chavez for his report up here today. It's very important what we're doing when it comes to housing, and so critical everywhere, and we take this serious here in Inglewood, and I'm very happy that we have now Mr. Chavez at the helm that's helping us get through this. And so, please, whenever you see information out there for, for us residents to participate in giving recommendations and feedback, take advantage of that opportunity. Take advantage of being able to call Mr. Chavez at his office. I know there's plenty of folks that call me, and I turn them over to Mr. Chavez, and he deals with them, and he gives them, you know, and he doesn't necessarily tell them what they want to hear, but what they need to hear, right? And tries to work them through the process of whatever the issue is. So, again, Mr. Chavez, great report. Thank you so much. With that, Mayor, everybody have a great day.
Thank you. Councilwoman Falk, District 4.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a moment and just enjoy our first day with no mask. Like, this is unbelievable. I've been in a mask since I started on the city council, and no mask today, so it's wonderful to see everybody's face here today. Also, I, just a couple more things. I wanted to acknowledge the graduation ceremonies that Councilman Padilla, Mayor Butts, and I attended on Saturday. Inglewood Unified School District graduated all of their high schools, City Honors, Morningside High, and Inglewood High, and it was a lovely, lovely graduation ceremony, and Mayor Butts gave some great remarks. And it was very exciting, because of course, it was a SoFi Stadium, and that was like the first event that they had there, so those, those high school graduates are very lucky to be able to have participated and, and had their graduation ceremony there, and, you know, and that's all due to, you know, this council, Mayor Butts, all the hard work, and so, everybody acknowledged that on Saturday and understood that, so that was a wonderful thing. Also, I just wanted to also acknowledge that our Inglewood Public Library system is back open, and so, they've launched a virtual summer reading program for the whole family. I have signed up. I want to get my boys back into reading this summer, so I hope that everybody will go to the website and get this family registered so that they can participate in the summer reading program. But it's back up and running, and you can go in and get books and all that good stuff, all the stuff we did 15 months ago. So, make sure you get over to the, to the library this summer. And then, lastly, I think our City Clerk already acknowledged that we are having the Hollywood Park Summer Bash, and so, looking forward to attending that this Saturday, and I just wanted to have all of our residents know that everybody is welcome, you don't need reservations, you can just go and participate. The only thing that you need reservations for is for the tours. So, looking forward to connecting with all of our Inglewood residents, council, mayor. Should be a fun time Saturday. So, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful. Councilman Morales, District 3.
Thank you. First, I also would like to just kind of acknowledge the fact that we made it through most of this COVID kind of pandemic, and really congratulate all of our employees who, who did a great job kind of following kind of the tone that was said. I want to congratulate all of us up here who recognized early on that we had to make some decisions. We actually gave the executive order privilege to the mayor, and Mayor, you made some, some difficult decisions early, and I think it helped. I think it helped our city, I think it helped our employees. We want you guys to know that we value each and every one of you, and we stayed out most, more than most cities, and we came back responsibly. So, I just, I want to say that I know what some of the other cities are doing, and I just, I feel so proud of how we handled it. So, thank everybody, including us up here, of the fireworks. I mean, ridiculous, right? I mean, you know, it's such an irresponsible thing to do, to be out there and intrude on, on your neighbors as if you own the whole neighborhood. It is something that we hope to crack down on here, starting the 26th, which is what George said, and I hope they get them all. I hope they get them all. I hope everybody is fined, and I just, you know, so much begins with respecting your neighbors. So much begins with you starting what is your quality of life. Parents, if your kids are doing it, you know, stop them. Just, I can't tell you how, how, how much that starts at home. So, you know, you'll hear us every week say it because it's just becoming ridiculous, and, you know, somebody's making money off of it, so it's up to us to stop it, it's up to us at home to stop it individually. So, hopefully, everybody looks to do that. It was nice having the first holidays, like I said, in terms of, of coming back, but I also know that there are plenty of people that are not vaccinated, and so, you know, I recommend you do so. Do it for your family, do it for the rest of us, because I'm enjoying the no-mask kind of environment, and just enjoying the fact that we're getting some normalcy back. So, those are my comments, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I want to thank Councilman Dotson for bringing up fireworks. It's, it's ridiculous. It's a social phenomenon that has persisted for decades, and it's not really going to be solved by trying to catch people lighting a cherry bomb. It's going to be changed by a heightened level of consciousness of what we're doing. You're terrorizing the peace and tranquility of neighborhoods. You're scaring pets, and there are people with post-traumatic stress syndrome that it causes great psychological disturbance to. And why do we do this? Why do we do this? To celebrate the Fourth of July, Independence Day. You know whose Independence Day it was? It was for the Europeans that came over and said they found America, slaughtered Indians, kidnapped Africans, put them in slavery, and so, we're celebrating that day that they got independence from the King of England. It's ridiculous. We need to grow up. We need to grow up as a people. Anyway, with that, we adjourn.